The Corvallis School Board Meeting for January 6th is called to order. Please join me if you're willing and able for the Plenipotentiary. I plead allegiance to the flag. We apologize, we are having some echo here. Someone's opening David's.
Okay, I think we're good.
Again.
Should be.
Awesome. Cool. All I guess for this, we had some echo in the room here and we should be good. I want to welcome people who are joining us today. Oregon Law allows public meetings to be held entirely online. In interest of public health and safety for all community members, especially for immunocompromised individuals and their families, the Corvallis School Board will continue to hold its meetings online. Public comments is available at some of our meetings. Information about how to provide a public comment is available on the Corvallis School website. Additionally, the board's agenda and package, as well as the link to the district YouTube channel, are available on the school board page on the district website. Public meetings are live streamed on the district YouTube channel and our recording is posted at the same channel, typically the day after the meeting. I am grateful that this technology makes it possible for more community members to view or participate in board meetings, given the flexibility provided by Oregon Law. Today, we have all board members in attendance. Vice Chair Saha Fingir-McDonald and myself, Chad Rocco, are attending in person. And directors, Hui White Bear, Vince Adams, Shawna Tominey, Therese Jones, and Tina Baker are joining us online. Due to or through audio or video, due to technology and connectivity limitations, some virtual participants attending may have their video off, some are at all time. With that, thank you for attending and we will move to the next item on the agenda. Action on matters discussed in executive session. As you know, we are not at liberty to discuss anything that took place in executive session. You received sample wording for the two possible options, or two options available to the board under separate covers. If you plan to propose wording other than provided, please write the motion in its entirety before reading it aloud. Does any board member wish to make a motion? Director Adams.
I'm going to have the superintendent enter into the previously negotiated agreement to resolve DP 21-108.
Is there a second? Moving by Director Adams and second by Vice Chair Saha Fingir-McDonald. Any discussion? See, there is no further discussion with Director Adams, restate the motion for the director.
I move to have the superintendent enter into the previously negotiated agreement to resolve DP 21-108.
Under motion, the board is, I'm sorry. Under motion, the board will enter into a vote. And Director Shawna Tominey, what's your vote?
Aye.
Director Hui White Bear.
Thank you.
Director Therese Jones.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Saha Fingir-McDonald.
Aye.
And Director Tina Baker.
Aye.
Director Vince Adams.
Aye.
Of course, aye, the motion passes you down. Next on the agenda is Board Member Reports. Does anyone wish to make a report? And I know Vice Chair Saha Fingir-McDonald and myself have some reports we'd like to share.
Yeah, so this is not really a report, but it's a comment of the day. The, today, January 6th, of course, is the anniversary of the insurgency at the US Capitol. Also is the, on the Christian calendar, is the piece of the epiphany, which is a piece that looks towards enlightenment and wisdom. And I think as we look at those two days together, especially in the public school system, that where it doesn't matter who you are or where you're from, you can come to school here. Um, I think it's almost appropriate that those two days are all at the same time because we have an essential role in our communities in learning civics, in learning, understanding and vetting sources of information, and in working at an ability to come together and work with people and disagree in a civil way. Um, and so like, I'm hoping you, as somebody who does celebrate epiphany, that enlightenment and wisdom is something that we can bring to our students as we, as we look at this anniversary of a really tragic event in our country.
Thank you, Sarah. I would like to follow with that as well, the appreciation and deep realization that we live in difficult times. Also, there are elements of hope about the future and where we can go. On the same evening, while the events were still prospering and we were seeing what we were seeing on TV, I'm thankful for Mid Valley local leaders, among them, the school board members and elected officials and clergy from across the Mid Valley region, who stood firm as soon as the events happened. And the statement said, or portion of it, "We must tell our children that acts of violence and rebellion against our representative government and its institutions are cowardly and unacceptable acts." And that's our responsibility as educators. Moving forward to today, my moment of hope is passing by the courthouse house before coming to here and knowing that the community members are showing up. And while we're not there with them, we owe it to them for standing up for democracy. The children and the people owe it to everybody who stands up and say, violence or uncivility is just not acceptable. And democracy, win or lose, we accept the results of election. And no matter what we believe and how strong we believe in it, we should do it in a way that honors how sacred democracy is. It depends on the Constitution, on the laws, but also depends on the people. Without the people, nothing matters. And I'm thankful for the people. Personally, I feel safer and I have experienced moments where, and I'm going to be emotional tonight, moments where I doubt it, if this is my community, whether from local or national, but from the halls of Congress to school board member, school board meetings and city councils, we stand together assured that the majority of the people stand for civility and for the democratic process. And that's our mandate to continue educating our kids to hold that baton and that candlelight and say, "We're going to follow with civility and with appreciation of civics." So with that, I will be centering my work today and contemplating on how can we move forward? So January 6th events in 2021 will never ever happen in any place in America. I'm sorry, this is not usual, but I felt I have to share it, so I can't move on. It's a nice meeting. Is there any further, or any reports from board members? Luke, Vice Chair Hui White Bear.
I was just gonna do a real brief report that I was able to do an interview with a local student about being on the school board as part of their assignment and wanted to share that with the community and other students and say that that was a really great experience. And it's always awesome when students reach out to us for those kind of assignments, especially in, I can't remember what class it was, sorry, off the top of my head, but as related to local governance and stuff like that. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any further reports? All right, see none. We'll move forward to the superintendent's reports.
Right, all right, well, I have a few updates for you tonight. The first one is related to ongoing COVID vaccine clinics. So as you know, we've continued to partner with the Benton County Health Department, with the Corvallis Boys and Girls Club, with Samaritan Health Services. We've had 12 clinics over the, really since the end of October till now. We have another one coming up at Shoveland on the 14th of January from 3:00 to 7:00. We chose Shoveland as the site based on where, based on vaccine rates in communities. That's one of the things we continue to look at and where those opportunities are, where it becomes more accessible to our community. So that's why we chose Shoveland. And then also in terms of numbers over those 12 events, we've been able to provide 1,246 vaccinations or doses. And so that's been really a powerful opportunity, community-driven, as we continue to do that work together. So I just wanted to provide that update to you as well as to announce that next upcoming clinic. Another thing that I wanted to share with you is that while we had planned to do an event at Garfield where folks would be able to come into the school, we're going to postpone that based on the numbers and the rate, case rates in our community. That will still be happening, but we're going to postpone it for now. So continue to watch for future dates, but as of right now, we're going to put that on hold. Also, I talked before about the Promise of Oregon campaign, which is something that the Corvallis School District is a part of this year, with 24 students being highlighted between now and the end of the year. Our first student, Rui Lopez Garcia from Linas College, will be recognized this week. So continue to watch what comes from the Promise of Oregon. We'll also continue to share out through our Facebook as well as through Twitter. And also the OSBA site will also be highlighting students from across the state. But I'm excited to share the stories of 24 of our students. So again, that's a great opportunity for the state to know more about our kids here in Corvallis. Another thing that I think is important to share with you is that we have pushed out information as well as a survey around our local option levy. So in fall 2016, our local option levy was approved by Corvallis voters. Five years later, we are asking our parents, our community members. This information has also been shared by the media. So we have a survey out that will be open through next Thursday for individuals to give us feedback on the ways that those dollars have been utilized up to this point. If the levy were to pass again, it gives us guidance in terms of how to structure that. So we so far have maybe 700 responses, which is a great turnout. And so I'm expecting that we'll have over 1,000 by the time we get to next Thursday. So another important thing for me to know about and also to be able to communicate out as you talk with your neighbors. One of the things that is not lost on me is that there's lots of information right now about the needs for schools in terms of staffing. And that's not a local thing, that's a national thing, especially right now as the funding goes up related to the most recent strain of COVID-19. So one of the, a couple of things that we're doing in this relationship that I think you should know about, one is that we have worked with EDG staff, our sub hiring platform, to make sure that at least one additional classified staff is assigned for the month to each school. Again, so we know that those staff members are going to be needed and necessary. And we wanted to be proactive in that, so we were assigning folks for the month. Also, some of the student teachers that are in our buildings are also were able to provide emergency licensure so that they can also serve in our buildings and in our classrooms. And finally, we have teachers at our secondary schools that are serving for one another in their off block or prep period, and so we're compensating them for those periods as well. So again, I know that that's a question that lots of community and folk and board members have. And so I just wanted to provide an update on that. Also, another thing that has come up this week is related to extracurriculars. There's been information that has come to us. And so our nine athletic directors from the Mid-Atlantic Conference met this week to talk about steps that could be taken. And they will meet, they met this week, they'll meet again next week and they'll continue to meet to look at what other supports need to be put into place. For now, they're really focusing on those expectations around masks. Everyone that is in a crowd will be expected to wear their mask. And if they're unable to do so, unwilling to do so, then we're going to have to leave. So we're going to be really clear about that at the beginning of the day. We're also going to not have concessions that come into the gyms. Again, it's one of those places where folks will be able to keep their masks on when we're not having concessions. There will be a spot for concessions, but it will not be in the gym so that the people can keep and maintain 60 of social distancing. And then also for our athletes, again, making sure that while they're not competing, that they are wearing masks, that they're wearing masks in locker rooms. That was the agreement that the athletic director made for this week. They'll review it for next week. Some of the other things that would be considered if we continue to see challenges are things like spectators in general and some of those other measures that we've had in the past, which we had last year. So again, just to know that there's a progression and we're moving to be more stringent in those requirements and we'll continue to look at that week to week. The same is true for other extracurricular activities as well. And then the last highlight for you tonight is today, students came to Bessie Coleman Elementary for the first time. So it was the first day of school for our kids at that building. Some of the quotes I took with me were, "You did a really good job." So then we got positive feedback on our design, the way that the school looked. "The school is awesome," was also shared far and wide. And one of the ones I really liked was in the gymnasium, a student told me, "The school smells really good." I think it was the new word of a gymnasium. But generally speaking, the students that came into the school were super excited and jazzed to see the new spaces. One of the things that I noticed was that when they walked in, there was sort of this kind of overwhelm nature because of the openness of the space. But as you watched students move into their classrooms with their teachers that they've had since the beginning of the year, there was also this sort of, "I know where I'm at, I know who I'm with, and I know what this is all about." And so it was, while there were times when I was nervous about a transition mid-year, I honestly think that there's some things that happened from that that were really beneficial. So it was fun to see that today. And so we're just going to show you a couple of photos that were taken today at Bessie Coleman. So I was able to greet students as they entered. So right now, we are using parking at the church next door to Bessie Coleman Northwest Hills, who've been great partners in this. And so students were dropped off at the parking lot with adults and then walked to the school. And the same thing at the end of the day, we're going to continue to work through some of the bugs with that. But in general, that's the way that that's going to work. And buses are coming into the bus loop. So again, students were coming in through the doors next to the cafeteria. So here's a couple of photos of that, of going to the left, again, highlights where kids are being dropped off at the, at our Brussels and walking over to the school. And then also the welcome back with some of our new furniture and sanitizer and then helping you to find your cubby and we're so happy to see you. So again, warm greetings as kids came into the space. There's the bus loop on one side of the school and then the entryway on the other. You'll see a lot of similarities to what you've seen at Lincoln. The backpedal park design accounts for some modifications based on the site, but a lot of similarities between the way the buildings look. Again, the cafeteria has a lot of similarities. There will be a mural that's up on the wall, you've seen the one for Mary's Peak. There's, there will be a mural that's also at Bessie Coleman. And then the new gym that smells so good. Students walking up the stairs into the space again, making sure that we're working on some of those pieces around social distancing. And then this one was so awesome to take the two girls walking hand to hand into the building to be directed to where to go this morning. So again, just really exciting to see all the smiles. And a couple of classrooms as well. So while it's a new building, students were coming back from a break, they were also getting down to business, getting down to learn. So that was also fun to see. As you can tell by the picture on the left and the picture on the right, again, some of those ideas around different sorts of furniture. You can see with the hooky stools on the left that allow kids to shake and wiggle but stay, stay involved and stay engaged on, in the, on the left. And also some of the configurations of the desks that can be made. Again, thinking about collaboration being one of those key elements of the design. And here's a few more pictures of classrooms. So I think that would be a great way to end my six report for this month. Again, we're excited to have kids in these new spaces and we will be having tours as soon as we can. Again, so our community gets to see some of the incredible things that they have helped us to be able to do for the youth of Corvallis. So that's, that's it for me.
Fantastic, wonderful, wonderful. And congratulations on such a phenomenal conclusion of building that took a lot of work, lots of years and lots of meetings and approvals and discussions. And now we're seeing it in pictures, it's just amazing.
We were a little, we were a little nervous on the snow day. Last Monday was a little bit nerve wracking, if you're ready for this. But, but it did happen.
Why not? Why not? Well, yeah, we have proven through the pandemic, the smoke and wildfires and the snow, we get work done. So thank you for doing that work.
Yeah.
Any board members wish to make a comment or have any questions for us?
I have a question. So in between our executive session and now, I heard that the boosters for 12 to 15 year olds were approved from a friend. And I was then able to confirm that from a news source.
You were able to?
I was able to. So I, my question is, if that being the case, will there be boosters for 12 to 15 year olds available at the clinics that we're offering?
I believe so. I, again, I would, we've, we've, the county has transitioned quickly with every iteration. So my guess is that that will be the case because we just learned about it in the last couple of minutes. I was just saying absolutely, but that has been the way that things have worked out.
I just wanted to call attention to the fact that that had happened.
Yeah, volunteering at several of the clinics, I've seen them very adaptable and OHA supplies.
And I think it's the same dose. I don't think there's a difference in the dose for 12 to 15 year olds from the older ones. So if that is the case, then they have.
That's right, that's right. Well, follow up with your pediatrician or hypnotherapist or whoever is helping you with reservations. So that's exciting news. Any further comments or questions? All right, see none. We will go to our student representatives' reports. And we'll start today with Corvallis High School student representative, Tyler Lutley.
Hi, guys. Glad to be with you today. So everyone's coming back off of winter break. Ben's bummed that they're off a break, but they're excited to get back to school and start the new year off right. So our seniors are wrapping up college applications, so it's got a temporary reprieve before finals and midterms hit. So everyone's kind of enjoying that right now. And we've started submitting cap and gown orders, so that's been super exciting. And people are kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, you know? And so also, our leadership class is currently working on pursuing the possibility of converting two of our single cell bathrooms into gender neutral bathrooms for the use of our, like, all of our students and especially to support our non-binary and trans students. And so we've been drafting a proposal and we're able to send it into our principal today to see if we can move forward with that project. We're super excited about the project and the student body is super excited. And I think that's all for, for CHS for the time being. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. College fellow, Marluu, the current, and then Zaya Thomas. Are they here with us? Okay, so let's get to Crescent Valley High School and Charles Patel and Calvin Kowalski. Hey, Calvin.
Charlotte is not here. She's currently actually playing, playing in the varsity girls' basketball game club. So we do not have our list tonight, however, there hasn't been all too much going on. We're currently moving ahead with our talent show. And then the part that I'm throwing in is, this isn't really like a report I've done before, but it's like, this one's more going to be an amalgamation of the worries of the students that have been expressed to me over how the exposure and notices are being sent out and how the school board might plan to deal with the new Omicron variant and its increased contagiousness. And so with regards to the exposed pronunciations, there's been some, and they're not, they're only found to parents. And while I personally received one or been given the exposure for any of my classes, I'm going off words of students who have received them through their parents. And they were a bit concerned about the fact that they weren't receiving them themselves or that not both them and their parents were seeing them. And so I was wondering if the board maybe explained that. And in regards to the Omicron variant, I did see that the board sent out an email or something regarding new things with the Omicron variant. However, I was wondering if there is specific ways that it might be monitored and that there might be like more, more action done to help keep students safe because of the fact this variant is more contagious than very in the past. And we are all in confined spaces in our classrooms. So this was sort of like expressing the worries to the students. And I was just wondering what the board has to say about that, so. So that was all.
So, so Calvin, when you were talking, it broke up just a little bit. And so I want to make sure that we get the information from you. So what I, what I, I know that there's something about notification that you have questions about. If you can send that to me, I will make sure that Mrs. Harder gets that, Assistant Superintendent Harder, and is able to share that information back with you so you can share it with, or counsel. So because that one was harder for me to hear. The one about what we're doing right now related to Omicron and the increased numbers of exposures or the folks that are getting, getting the virus. One of the things that I'm still committed to is doing what I can to keep our schools open. To me, that is vital, it's super important over what we've seen over the last few years. I think that's really critical. And so for me, making sure that we continue to get people vaccinated. And so for me, making sure that we continue to get people vaccinated, that we're wearing masks, that we are maintaining social distancing. It's something that we talked about today with our middle school and high school, our high school principals, middle school principals again tomorrow. Because I know that each one of those layers of prevention is so important. And at the same time, how important it is for students to stay in school and to be able to access learning in the schools. And so for me, I want to continue to advocate for those precautions and layers of of support to be in place rather than for us to move back to any sort of disaffirming. So that's, I hope that answered what you're looking for. If not, if you have more specifics, I'm happy to answer those for you too.
Yeah, and again, I meant to say that, but you don't really need, like we can get in more specifics when we meet with you on the 18th, Ryan.
Yeah.
Both on thing about the exposure noses and the it was sort of more, is there anything new that is doing to combat Omicron? Or or are we just going to sort of try and crack on more on these policies that we already have in place? And try and come more stringent on them? Or are we going to do that and introduce perhaps some policies to combat the ultra contagious?
So at this point, we are looking at utilizing the same processes that we've used so far through the pandemic. While also trying to encourage folks to get vaccinated and continue to have vaccination clinics. With athletics, we are putting some new steps, extracurriculars, bring some new things into place now. And we'll review them again next week. So I would say that with each one of these changes that we've seen, there have been some modifications. And I also know that schools continue to be a safe place for kids to be and students to be. And a place where there are a number of precautions. Melissa, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add to what I've shared.
I, I think what I would want to say Calvin is what we're doing in schools right now is we're, we're pretty conservative when it comes to that. We're very tight in our, in our protocols. What we did today is remind staff and families how important it is for those layered prevention strategies. And, and right now what we're thinking is I don't, I don't know that we can, we can do anything specific to combat Omicron as much as we can make sure those layered prevention strategies are in place so we can limit the spread of, of it. Because it's, it's super, it's super contagious compared to the other variants that we've seen. So we're, we're reinforcing all of, of those kinds of things. And what we've heard from the state too. You've already heard Mr. Nos talk about, which is, you know, we're not going to do that Garfield community night where we're going to tour the school because bringing together large groups of people like that really not, you know, not advised at this point. And from what we hear from the state, we, we need to be monitoring this very tightly through like the first or second week of February. So this is what we're going to do. We're going to really make sure that we're tightening those, those strategies up. And also I think I heard what you said Calvin and I wrote it down. Are you asking that students want a notification and parent square similar to what their parents are getting when there is a positive case in their classroom? Yes. Okay. All right. I'll, I'll, I'll work on that. So you don't have to email. I, I've got it and I'll, I'll take a look at what that, what that means for communication.
Okay, and if there's any else, I'm sure court something. So yeah, I was going to talk with you on the 18th, Ryan. And either you or I could just report back at the next meeting to the public.
Sounds good. So I'm going to go to the CD or council on the 18th to answer some questions and have some discussion. So that's the other opportunity Calvin and I are talking about.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So you were talking about, you're encouraging vaccines. Um, and you, I have a testing question. And I know that we have the availability, the ability for students to get tested every week. Have we let families know about that again recently? There may be people now who would be infected.
Um, I, I want to echo what Sarah's saying. I've talked to a parent today on the phone who made a really good point about that as well. You know, we focused really heavily on asking families to sign up for screening when five to 11 year olds were not eligible for vaccination. Now they're vaccinated. It's now with Omicron, it's still really important for all students to continue to be screened. So we did a big message today, which is kind of a big push. So give us like a few days and I think we'll push out that screening information again, too. We have a great partner in Willamette Valley Toxicology. So we, we want to really capitalize on that.
Wonderful. Any questions or feedback for our student representative from school board members? Well, see none. Thank you for our student representatives. Just as a reminder, as I always feel free to deliberate and participate actively in the discussion. And your excuse at 8pm, if you wish to go to do your homework or relax or, or you may stay as much as you want. With that, we will move for public comments. And we have two people or individuals who have registered according to the instructions in time. And we will be calling on them soon. For those who wish to communicate with the board, they may find and meet the board on Corvallis School Board website. Meet the board and there are instructions on how to reach out over email or provide public comments in future business meetings and some of our future board meetings. With that, let's have Annie Arrington. Or Annie, first of all, I want to make sure if you're here, are you here? And can you hear me? Annie, can you hear me? Annie, you are muted on the platform. Now you are unmuted. Can you hear me? Wonderful. I would like to ask you to mute the YouTube or the live stream that you're listening to. So you can hear us, we can hear you over the phone without the echo. Just to make sure if you're here, are you here?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Wonderful.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear it very well. It is my understanding that you were added to the guidelines regarding public comments. Is that correct?
Sure. Yes.
Wonderful. I'll just say that a few things and then you may start. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to make your comments. I will alert to you when you have 30 seconds left. With that in the tone and when your tone is up with a similar tone. Following your comments, the board will have up to three minutes to ask clarifying questions. Before you start your comments, please state your name for the record and state whether you reside within the school district boundary. You may start at any time you're ready.
Okay, and forgive me because I didn't have a lot of time to prepare. So my name is Annie Arrington. I do not reside within the school limits anymore. I am in Albany School District and my ex-husband, the father of my children is in the Solomath School District. All of our children have resided, have gone to Garfield Elementary School. We have, I have seven children in total and four that have already passed through Garfield and I have one that is residing in Garfield right now. She is a second grader. The main reason for me wanting to comment in the meeting was because I know that my daughter is not in exclusive situations with the special education at Gar, at Garfield and Corvallis School District with COVID. Obviously kids are behind naturally. But I've been voicing concerns now for a year and a half since February of 2020. When Miss Santi left, that is when I started my voicing my concerns with her. And we've had some issues and as I've requested to be put on the board meeting, I finally got a call from the special education director, Sean, who has been very helpful.
Annie, may I?
Go ahead.
I interject and I'll ask the secretary to pause the time and give you maybe a few seconds extra if you need it. But I wanted just a clarification. If your concern might relate to an operational or specific issue, that might be a complaint or an ongoing operational.
No, no.
Okay, wonderful. That's all what I want to make sure to highlight. So because we are from really hearing those issues outside the.
Right.
So as long as that's, I apologize for interrupting and we'll give you 10 extra.
No, no, it's okay. And I apologize. I am not the greatest at organizing my thoughts. So, and like I said, I didn't have a day to prepare. So basically my concern, and after speaking with Sean this probably an hour ago, he just called me. My concern is that that there has to be better steps and easier ways for parents to access evaluations and understanding of special education when they have concerns with their children. Like I said, this has been a long process for us and I have, I'm experienced in the 504 IEP kind of plan. So for my concerns are that there's a lot of hoops to jump through. And you, with all the evaluations, parents are waiting and are losing months and months and months of their child's education. So that is my main concern. Go outside please. Thank you. Go, go outside. But that is my main concern and I did find out that there is a committee, public committee to, for special education, but that is my concern. One, is there, you know, when you guys go into funding meetings, are we funding enough for, are we putting enough aside for special education needs? Especially right now with COVID and more kids generally being behind.
Wonderful. Thank you, Annie. Your time is up. I would like to open the opportunity for school board members to ask any clarifying questions. Does any school board member have any clarifying questions? Well, thank you very much, Annie. I really appreciate you sharing this. We have one from Calvin. That's your first, Calvin, Calvin Carlson.
Yes.
Um, so we spoke about parents needing easier access. We heard about students and how aggressive they're going on. Is that correct?
I couldn't hardly hear you. I just changed rooms. I have a two-year-old in the other room making total noise.
Calvin, it might be better if you turn your camera off because we're really struggling to hear you and that, that might help. Thank you.
Can you hear you better now?
Yes.
So much better.
Okay. So what I was saying was I was asking for clarification on what that you were wondering about making it easier for parents to access progress reports for their children? And wondering what funding is for special needs children, especially during the coronavirus pandemic and when more children are behind?
So yes, I, I'm pretty, I've always been involved in the school. So I feel like I know issues. And what's going not a lot of clarification in the beginning of the processes. And so I feel like I know that there's a lot of parents that are non-English speakers or even English speakers like me, but may not have as many, as much experience or resources to understand those processes and what is available for their children. And then the second part was, yes, when you guys go into budget meetings, I know that things are allocated for buildings or for this or for that. And I think that one of the things for special education, especially now with COVID and those funds should be put towards more, not even just special education, but those kids who have fallen behind, but don't qualify for special education.
Okay, thanks. Fine on what you were actually asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
You're welcome.
Just as a reminder, we, we can deliberate a lot tonight during the public comment period. But definitely I would like to follow up with you to discuss some of those questions on rent of budget. And maybe you can listen to us towards the end of the evening with public comments. But thank you for your comments and have a wonderful rest of your evening. Next up is.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Troy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Troy Brant, are you here? We have Troy.
He's there.
Troy, I would like to ask, you are unmuted and I believe you can hear me well.
Thanks, Amy. I can.
All right. So it is my understanding that you were provided the guidelines regarding public comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So in brief, you'll have three minutes and one notice at the 30 seconds and another notice when your time is up. And please indicate if you, your name and if you live in the district or not, as soon as you start your talk.
Okay, thanks. My name is Troy Brant and I do reside within the Corvallis School District. Board Chair Aladruba, Corvallis School Board Members and Superintendent Nos. On behalf of the Franklin School PTA, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to include the enclosed written testimony regarding the Corvallis School District Bond Program. As it pertains to school building infrastructure funding, more specifically, how funds have been allocated towards Franklin School. We are very appreciative that the Corvallis community places a high value on education. The community's approval of the nearly $200 million capital construction bond in 2018 was an emphatic indication of the community's support for our school district, families and students. The district and its contractors have executed on a generational opportunity to transform aging schools and provide more equitable opportunities for district students. We applaud the district for successfully undertaking and executing on such an expansive effort. We are also thankful for the district's and the Corvallis School Board's commitment to equitable access to an inclusive and rigorous learning experience and outcome for our district families. Franklin School celebrated its 26th year in operation this past fall. We believe Franklin School in part represents the district's commitment to diversity by offering a unique educational pathway for families who are interested in a different educational experience, especially at the middle school level. Franklin School represents inclusion by offering admission spots to any family in the district independent of their neighborhood of residence. The bond program allocation of Franklin School is deficient relative to all other schools in the district that are slated for meaningful upgrades. Even with an expanded total budget, Franklin's funding allocation remains at 4% of the total bond program budget. While other schools benefited from substantial funding increases over the past three years of bond planning and design, Franklin has not been afforded the same benefits. The low funding level is apparent in the bond promises and the budget modifications we have been provided. We will be the only school in the district with a combined gym cafeteria. We will not be provided with new playground equipment or a new covered play shed. Irrigation and landscape systems will not be upgraded. And there's no indication of covered bike parking following our project. Each of these items has been provided for nearly every other elementary school undergoing construction. We believe these are inequities that impact our students' educational experience and may affect the future longevity of the school as prospective parents assess higher quality facilities elsewhere in the district. We understand that expanding Franklin School's scope at this point will be constrained by dwindling bond reserves. However, to meet the district's value of honoring diversity, equity and inclusion principles, we believe the district and the board need to address the concerns we have outlined in the attached document. The Franklin School PTA looks forward to collaborating with the district and the board to develop solutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Troy. And also for the question or request that you could email, unless you did email us in the past few hours you have. And so the secretary, the board secretary will forward your written communication to the board. And really thank you for your comments. Any further questions from the board? All right, see none. Thank you very much and have a wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Hearing no comments, the public hearing now is closed. Oregon School Boards Association Work Session now begins with Kristen Miles. I want to welcome Kristen Miles. Welcome. And I want to say thank you for being here. We are very grateful for OSBA's work. And as a reminder for the public and the community, this is our third year, if I'm not mistaken, a third year the school board invests its time and efforts and resources to do professional developments that's focused on transformational change. And in lieu of that commitment, OSBA awards scholarships or give us the board money to allocate for scholarships for students. So we are very grateful for this opportunity and I believe Kristen, that floor is yours to leave the session.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I love popping into your meetings early and just seeing how you do what you do. So thanks for letting me just join when you started. And you're right, Sammy, this is year three. The time has gone fast. I have appreciated working with you all this time, too. I, I love the work that you do in this program and I appreciate getting to be an observer and a facilitator in that. I just want to check with you before we dive in. Are you scheduled for a break at any point? I know you had like an executive session and you. So I'm just like putting it out there, like you're going to be able to focus if we start or do you want like a five minute?
Yeah, with a wave of fist to five, would you like to have a break?
All right.
I just want to say, Kristen, that you're my favorite person in the whole meeting tonight. Thank you.
You know, I have a sense, I, you know.
I just feel so known and cared for.
I'm so glad. I see you. I see you, Teresa. All right, we'll take a five.
All right, we'll see you. We'll be back in five minutes.
He's still, Teresa, are you there?
I am, yes. I usually don't stream my camera because it really slows my bandwidth and I get cut off a lot or freeze.
Got it. Okay, should we go ahead and start? Are we waiting for Melissa? And Tina, are you there?
I am. I have the same issue with my bandwidth. So.
Totally understandable. Okay, so, so tonight we're continuing to talk about community engagement and we're going to talk about this in in the context of your board goal categories. And so I know that you've probably all seen the little agenda that was worked up under this section. Before we talk about the intended outcomes, I want to give you a little tutorial on Mural. Now I could see some of you in in Mural right now. Okay, I see some more of you popping in. If, I can always put the link in the chat if that works, if you don't have that email. Would that be something that would help?
That would be great.
Okay.
And may I suggest, I don't know, Kristen, if we are not going to share screen, I would suggest also to email the link to Kim and we update the comments, not the comments, the description of the YouTube. So anyone from the public can follow that. Is that okay or not? Or maybe no, it's only participation by us. All right, sorry. I'll take that suggestion back.
Well, and what I can do is share my screen so anybody that's watching can actually see what we're doing. So so I'll plan, I'll plan to do that. Okay, link is in the chat. And if you can all pop into that. Give it just a second. Should be working. Is anybody having a problem with it? I see some folks coming on, so I'm guessing it's working. Good, good. Okay.
I'm having a bit of a problem just to internet connectivity, so you might.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, Tina, if you finally can't get into it, what I can do is take your notes down here and put them up there.
Okay.
So just let me know what you need and we'll, we'll be able to call. We want your voice in the conversation.
Great.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I can see folks coming in. So I sent this out in an email, but what you're going to see is, you know, just a bunch of stuff that's going to look really tiny. There are going to be times that I will call you to my viewpoint as a facilitator. I have that magic power of like making you look at what I'm looking at. But we're going to go through these things one by one. Some basics here are if you click and hold with the left button on the mouse, click and hold, you can drag your screen. Nobody else is going to see you do it. You can drag your screen. Oh, I need to share my screen. Stand by. There we go. So you can click and hold, drag your screen. You don't want to click and hold on one of the little post-its or else that will get, you'll drag that away. So make sure that you're on a make sure that you're on a white space, an empty space, and then you can drag around. The next thing, and I'm going to pull you to my view for a moment, just a second. I'm going to show you how we're going to enter information. Hang on. Love that it says summon. I get to summon you to my view. So I'm just going to show you how to type into one of these little stickies. I'm just going to click on the sticky and just type. So I just click once, I type and then I can. So we're not going to, we will practice that in a moment. You will each have all of your, yes, thank you, tests, but that worked. You're right. So we're all going to have an opportunity to do this. Each of you have your own line. I want to make sure that I got everybody to. I may have too many people in there, but I was putting everybody's names up as I saw them come onto the screen. If I missed anybody, I have some extra spots. But so if you have problems during, those are the main functions. That's what, that's what you're going to mostly do. If you have issues during this process, let me know. And we can, we can work on that. Usually it works pretty well. So the first thing that we're going to do is talk about the intended, I'm going to pull you to me again. We're going to talk about the intended outcomes for community engagement and then we're going to locate those as we look at those within your goal areas. So what I would love for you to do, and just, just take a minute to think because there's not unlimited space here and I don't want this to go like too far and get too diffuse. But I would love for each of you to take just a few minutes and think of two or three really solid compelling reasons that you believe or the compelling outcomes that you believe are the focus of why you think it's important to do community engagement as a board. So just a couple, because I'm sure we'll also, we'll, we'll see everybody's. But you can just pick a sticky, type into it, and then after a few minutes, we'll look at what everybody said.
I thought it was unmuted. Do we do it in our little old line of squares?
Not yet, over here.
Okay, okay, sorry, I'm confused.
Oh, no, you're fine. You're fine.
It's moving, it's moving on that side and it's moving on my other screen.
Okay.
Thank, it's okay. I got it. Thanks.
We've got two or three that you felt really strongly about. We'll go ahead and stop. And Tina, if, if you're having a hard time doing this, I can always take yours down. Oh, I see you up there now. Yeah, anybody that needs any dictation, let me know. Okay, another minute or so. All right, go ahead and wrap up the one that you're on. We'll look at what we've got. Okay. So I'm going to read these to you. Some of them may look small on your screen. I'm just going to read all of them aloud. We've got transparency, elevate marginalized experiences, equitable distribution of power, build trust, amplify unheard voices, better understanding of what the board does, mutual learning, goodwill of taxpayers, understanding the peoples whom we are meant to represent and serve, community accountability, so all voices are heard, greater alignment of community values and district mission, challenge the standard narrative of white middle class, space for more voices to be heard, anti-racist work, understand experiences from others, empowering the community, multiple perspectives, co-create solutions, shared governance, make sure we are on track, building pillars of support for students, dealings of admin and board members are transparent, ensuring the district is meeting the needs of students and families, understand perspective of whole community, not just vocal few. ensuring the district is meeting the needs of students and families, understand perspective of whole community, not just vocal few, hear concerns of constituents, especially those who don't usually reach out to us, being responsive to emergent needs, and building positive relationships and creating pathways for communication. That's, that's a very comprehensive list. Let me ask you this. Are there any of these that you feel are either duplicative or that really, really belong together? Like they kind of mean something very similar. Did you see any that like resonated with you as like, oh, those are, that's a common theme?
We have space for more voices to be heard. And then amplify unheard voices. Those are really similar.
And then could we also include, so all voices are heard?
Yep.
I feel like most of the ones around listening kind of go together.
I would agree.
Maybe once I understand, then also once I understand the parent.
We have the ones about building trust and creating pathways for communication. I think those kind of go together.
I think shared governance and co-creating solutions could be, uh, have some overlapping area.
Things around as you see, as I like start creating things, if you see things that go together. If I were doing this in person, I'd have a huge board in front of me and I'd be like, where did you see that? Because I wouldn't be able to see it and you would. Somebody said trust went with, is that with transparency? Where would you see that going? Maybe that's accountability.
I think it could go a lot of places. It would, there's a lot of dimensions to that concept. I think, um, challenging the standard of, the standard narrative of white middle class and anti-racism seem to support one another. I guess they're already next to each other, never mind.
It's like, where are?
Good job. No, they're, they're like literally right next to each other. That was on purpose or not, but it just worked out, I guess.
Vince, I just stole one from you. I hope, uh, I put it where you wanted it.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I think I'm kind of a terrible student. Were we supposed to move these ourselves to where?
I, I was starting to do it, but I realized I also needed help and then someone would be volunteered to help me without even me asking for it, so I appreciate that.
That is so fantastic because I often feel like faculty, we just are just students that finally had to pay rent and we don't take instructions any better than our students do. And that's what's happening right now.
You know what? It's all working out. Okay, so we've got sort of a theme. We're not gonna spend, well, we are gonna spend some time on this. What I want to spend a bunch of time on later is thinking about the kinds of questions to ask, but we do need to sort of land on what are the themes here. So let me. So what are the themes you see here? As you, as you're looking at these groupings, what would you say? Oh, that's sort of the name of that group. And I'll type it in if you wanna just tell me what you're seeing.
Equity is accountability.
I think we have this multiple perspectives kind of piece here.
Trust.
Trust?
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Was it support? Taylor and Kevin.
Yeah, Taylor, how many want to add? Themes that you see?
Um, I see a theme of transparency in the, the lower three. See if I can.
It revolves around empowerment.
Empowerment? I hear empowerment. Sorry, Kevin, you're breaking up just a little bit, but I think I heard the word empowerment.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, anymore? What about one? Is there one more or the, or does this pretty much capture your thoughts? Accountability, multiple perspectives, trust, transparency, empowerment?
When did everybody think about the, what's the right-hand side of the theme? Uh, is that more of empowerment than accountability or is it something else? Someone that's hovering over.
I really like the term governance. That's a really cool idea there.
Yeah.
For that, for that whole, for that whole grouping there on the right-hand side.
Thoughts on that? Does that, is that a good summary of what you did? Accountability, multiple perspectives, trust, transparency, empowerment, and shared governance. Are those your intended outcomes?
I think I'd add one more, Kristen. Over on the left side, the grouping seems to be more around responsiveness. I don't know if that's captured yet in these themes.
Sure. Because the, the goal here is to have, you know, something succinct but comprehensive. Why you want to do community engagement that, um, and what you're, obviously what your intended outcomes are. Because my recommendation to you would be as you go forward to, to, um, you know, expand your initiatives, expand your processes for community engagement, that there be a statement that say, this is our why, that says, this is our why, right? And that you'd be able to articulate in that statement, like what you've come up with here. These are the theme, this is the why. This is why we want to, you know, come to you, to hear from our community. And, and so, um, so I want to encourage keeping it, again, concise, but representative of all of your great ideas here. So does this, does this list do it?
Yeah. I feel like accountability covers a lot of the things that were brought up. And so it's like, kind of that checkpoint to some of the other things that are listed.
Yeah, it's kind of an all, I mean, that, that could be a statement. I mean, trust could also be sort of an umbrella statement too, right? But accountability also, because a lot of these things fall into that. Okay, does this work for now? Because what I, what I will do is give all of this back to you, not in a picture like this, but in a way that you can digest it. And as usual, I will, you know, give you something back in a format that is, here's how I think your, like, here's my best attempt at capturing your thoughts, and then you can do with those what you will. But if this, you feel like captures that, then let's keep this in mind as we then go look at your board goal categories. Does that work? Okay. So I'm gonna make you come with me as we look at the board goals. So I put this here. The other thing that you can do with this, I'm gonna unlock this. So you can, we'll watch for a second, this little PDF thing here, you can double-click that and a PDF will come up for you. So if this is a little bit small, just double-click that little PDF in the, um, in the lower left hand corner, and you should get another screen with the PDF on it. And so, um, or you can zoom in to this one, right? Zoom in with your mouse wheel. At least you, you can zoom in like this, just with your mouse wheel and read it. Somebody clicked on the whole thing. It might change to a weird font. Maybe click on the, there we go. Okay, so let's just go ahead. I'd like you to take just a few minutes. I know you know this document, but let's just, my next question for you is going to be, you know, are these, are these goal areas still the right areas of focus? So take a few minutes and take a look. But he's moving it. Click and hold on the document here. I'm gonna move it down and then I'm, I'm, I'm gonna lock it, my friends.
Now, Kristen, how do you lock it? What's, what's intended to do to you right now? Uh, what, what do we need to do?
Oh, I would just like you to take a few minutes and just look over this document again. Like I said, I know you know it, but we're gonna have a conversation about it. So if everybody could just familiarize themselves with the points in each of these, into these goals, then we'll discuss it further.
Uh, I just wanna interject that we might have a sixth strategy on goal six that's not here.
Oh, okay, then definitely double-click the PDF. So double-click that, yeah, that little thing, and then the whole thing will come up. I don't know why it didn't do that here. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's that.
Is it like on a separate page? Okay, yeah, if you double-click the PDF, there's a brief second page. But genius just did that. What, brief second page? Was that you, Vince?
You have to lock it.
I have to lock it?
So it won't move.
Okay, there we go. Okay. How you doing on the review? Everybody need a minute more? Pretty good? Okay. So, this is gonna be mostly discussion. I don't have an activity for this, but what I want you to discuss with each other are, I mean, the essential question of, are these still the right goal areas? Now, the, the little pieces underneath may change, but if you look at student achievement, equitable systems, real-world learning, health and wellness, long-range facility planning, and then I don't know how you want to, I don't know what the intent for the last one was about the goal in response to COVID-19. Here we are still in response, but, um, I don't know if that was intended to fall off or change, so I'm just gonna leave that out there and you all can, you know that way better than I do. But as you look at that goal area, those goal areas, what are your thoughts? Are these still the right, is this still the right direction? And we're not looking at strategies, Brett. That's not board stuff.
I think I'll go back to what I shared last time we looked at the goals and like wondering how, like, because we're, like, goals are meant to be achieved, right? And like, some are short-term, some are long-term, some are like lifelong. So I think that knowing what types of goals that we're hoping for with each of these, I think would be helpful in guiding our work, especially like number, goal number two, equitable systems. That feels like a lifelong goal at this point. Like it's gonna take a really long time to get there. Maybe not lifelong, but you know what I mean? It's good to, it's a long-term goal, whereas some of these are short-term goals, like even the long-range facility planning, um, I think was the other one that I brought up to, um, especially with the whole, um, bond project and everything and, um, and how you mentioned the COVID-19 goal as well, like clearly that one's gonna hopefully sooner than later be, but we're still living in it, right? So that's like, that's what kind of thing I have on the top of my mind is like, what, how are we determining how we develop the goals? Because I wasn't here when these got developed either, right? And so I don't know the backstory of what the intent was for the timeframe of them. And so for me, thinking about measuring goals has to do with like a timeline as well.
And then like.
Lou, I have to, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I'm piggybacking off of what she said, who had said, um, goals are meant to like be achieved. So what was, what would achieving these goals look like? That might also be something to consider.
Yeah, and I think, uh, Lou actually highlighted something really I haven't noticed until now. Uh, there's a difference between goal one and goal two, where goal, goal one includes the ambitious, uh, life, really long-term, even longer than, uh, possibly a range, uh, goal or objective. But also it includes what I would call maybe benchmarking. And by benchmarking, you're saying this is where I want to be in five years to achieve that goal. It's a, it's an objective. This could be quantifiable, it could be really ambitious, but yeah, it gives you a little bit of a, uh, just like carpets or benchmarking it. You see the pencil on, on the, where you want to reach. Uh, equitable systems is the goal, but also the benchmark is the same goal. And maybe we need to find out, how can we measure ourselves achieving that? So I, I don't want to complicate the documents, but I can see that there is a goal and there's a benchmark and there are strategies to achieve the benchmark to get closer to the goal. So that's one way I could frame how the goals are really high-level and, and I, I remember from the discussion in 2018 or 17, uh, that, that was the kind of part of the intention is that we would set very ambitious goals and strategies to achieve them. And the superintendent, with available data or possibly, uh, collectible data, we would, uh, find out where we are and keep pushing ourselves, uh, forward. And just like how we see the student, uh, this is school information plan. We would see where we are and that staff will tell us they will move, uh, within a year somewhere. But I think that's, just wanna, wanna share that because I can see benchmarking is not very clear everywhere, probably. As much as goal one, but maybe goal five.
I wonder if some of the, and I know, I'm definitely not trying to interrupt the flow of your conversation, but one of the things that I'm hearing just a little bit of, and that I experience with other boards myself is the word goal, right? Because as, as a couple of you have pointed out already, a goal is something that's, I think Lou was the first to say it. A goal is something that's meant to be achieved, right? Like, there's a plan, you get there, it's done. And, and so I wonder if, if that word might be just changing the lens a little bit and maybe using a word like, so a, a lot of the, the words that we use when we're working with boards are like, uh, strategic priorities or pillars or things that where the actions and strategies underneath it or cornerstones may change, but the overall big category looks like, like a mini vision statement. And you have that, um, you know, these descriptions of each of these goals. But where it's, where it's like, as Sammy said, what does it look like five, 10 years down the road? All students will. Or like Corvallis School District is a place where this happens. Like what, what would you say is, is the end, you know, when you, when you get to that point, what does it look like? And so it may just help to reframe this from goals to something else. Pillars, cornerstone, strategic priorities, whatever word you want to use. And I just wonder, I just want to put out there that maybe that thinking would, would be of assistance in some way.
Kristen, that, that comment really jogs my memory. I've been sitting here trying, I remember sitting in. Kristen, that, that comment really jogs my memory. I've been sitting here trying, I remember sitting in the room when we did this work and I'm trying to read, I cannot recall the prompt question that created all the raw material that eventually became this document. But I know that we were thinking about what were the determinants of, of student success? And we define student success very broadly. It wasn't just academic achievement, but clearly that's goal number one. But so this idea of bucketing, creating these realms or goal areas or pillars, if you will, it really fits with the, with the way that the group synthesized these, these goals together.
And when we think in terms of like strategic priorities or cornerstones or pillars, those are generally meant to be a little more static, whereas the actions underneath them and the strategies by year may be more dynamic. Right? Because you don't wanna, and I know you haven't, you don't wanna change the underpinnings of your overall vision and mission every year, right? You wouldn't want it to be like, well, all of the, we're changing all of these goals to something else and we do this every year. But, but you know, naming something that there will always be probably, you know, work to do or refinement or improvement or building upon strengths, you know, not to say you will never get there, but those umbrella ideas that the, the things underneath that can shift, but those umbrellas are gonna be guiding forces as you work throughout. So I will stop talking now. Let you have your conversation.
Go for it, Jenna.
Okay, thanks. So it seems like where a lot of this is, what it's pointing to for me, and I think I've been doing work that brings up some of these terms with some other, other organizations that I work with, is that we really have pieces of a logic model. Right? Where you have these different strategic priority areas. And then under each, what we ultimately are looking for, what are the inputs and activities and the outputs? What are the short term, medium term and long term, specific and measurable goals that then fit under there? And so I wonder if, to your point, Kristen, that that's some of the bigger picture, part of this is really looking at these board goals more in that direction. Cause there are a couple of things to me that stand out as missing, but when I think about those things, they're not necessarily something I would add to the overarching list of strategic priorities, but probably things that fit into, how do we actually get there? What are the things that are critical to get there? And so that might fit in with some of the short, medium or long term planning. But it's sort of putting the puzzle together in a way that, that makes sense and help, helps us drill down into that.
Shauna, I have to agree. And then we also have to look at, what are we wrapping up? You know, we're getting close to the completion of our construction projects. Do we really need to consider maybe goal number five being your completion? And what can we refocus on if we wanna keep it? Or do we want to get rid of it and focus our attention in the other goals that we have and prioritize?
So I was, I was, I think that for the most part, the way that we utilize this document is by priority. So I think that it, it's more, I would feel like it's more, at this point, it's more priority than goal. However, when I come and present my, for my evaluation, I provide evidence of actions, activities, and also outcomes related to each of these. So while that may not be embedded in this document, it's, it's the practice that ensues. And the same thing is true of our budgeting. The, the few pages near the front of the budget that identify these goals and investments related to these goals, it's another place where this shows up. So really, our, we budget based on these priorities. And I provide evidence of progress towards these priorities through goals and actions. So I think that, I just wanna add that in terms of context for, for board members, just to think about the other areas of where this work shows up.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, you know, looking at it and thinking about the sort of the themes or the benchmarks or the, I don't know what we'll call them, rather than the specific goal. If I sort of think of them as these big institutional focuses that we may have, it's almost like we'll have those and then we'll have goals underneath. Like the goal will be the, you know, we want all of our students to achieve academically. We want to build equitable systems. I mean, those are, but I don't imagine we're gonna ever get to a point as a school district where we're not gonna have a focus on academic achievement. Um, but, but under that priority, the goals that we want to hit may change. Because if we look at this, but, which means, I need to think about this document differently because like if I'm looking at this as really a statement of, of benchmarks or priorities or whatever within our school district, if some of the things we've listed are too narrow. Look, I don't want kids to just be learning to read at a third grade level and just pass ninth grade math. If that's sort of our benchmark and our big overview, over R G theme, but academics, then that statement needs to be more aspirational. And then under that are the goals of how we're going to, this, you know, the, you've sort of got your life, your lifelong goal and your achievable goal underneath that, how we're gonna reach, how we're gonna reach it. So, I think it's sort of a matter of how we think about what these really are.
Yeah. I like one thing, I like the historical context with you. I know I saw, I see where, where you are, where you were and where you're headed. And I'm just gonna throw this out there, Brian, when, when I joined and there was these three goals or strategies, every student is a graduate, every student shows progress, and every student graduates with a plan.
Close the opportunity.
Close the opportunity. And, and we expanded, they seem to be, they are still the driving force, the North Star for us. And now we, not now, in 2018, we went from very high ambitious goals. Again, the same thing, it's a, probably it will take us a very long time until we achieve there, into more elaborate, multi-dimensional, translatable to budgets, documents and to school information plans and performance reviews for superintendents all the way to everybody's staff. That's probably the utility of the goal. It's helped us go from three North Stars to more clearer five North Stars. And the strategies are probably the pathways. I'm just wondering, yeah, as we head toward the next step, we shouldn't lose the value of what we have in how we're operationalizing those goals. Sorry, don't, don't take me as resisting changing this. I'm just sharing the context of where we are and how, how I, I see this document.
Uh, so I just noticed what time it was. I don't know if Taylor and Calvin are staying on, but I was just gonna say, thanks for being here in case you are hopping off. But if you're gonna be here, yay. But anyways, I just wanted to drop that in real quick since it is that time. But also, I think what I'm having a hard time with, with this conversation is from like a strategic planning point, like it's, feels really hard to have this conversation with background and strategic planning when we're using terms like goals and using, but it's not what we mean. And so we can't expect this to be clear for the community. And I really wanted to express that, like, it's frustrating for me. So I could see how this would be frustrating with expectations from the community as well. And I think we need to call it what it needs to be called and revise that. That way it's clear, not just for us as a board, but also for the community that actually reads our stuff because there are community members that do, because that's how we get questions and that's how things feel out of alignment for some folk. And if there, if it's not a goal, we need to call it something else and not say, well, it's called a goal, but this is how we're using it and this is what it's intended for, because it'll help minimize that confusion. And as board members come and go throughout the years, across however many years we have this set of information, it'll be less confusing too. And that way we know what we're working for, but I really think we need to have goals. Like, that's like, we can't not have goals. And so we can have guiding, we can have guiding work. Like, of course, like Sarah already said, like student achievement's always gonna be the center, right? Like that's, that's why the schools are in existence, to help students get to where they need to be. But we also need to have goals that are measurable and that we're gonna be able to reach with a timeframe. Cause right now, this says, it says until 23 on here, isn't that what it says? And so those are the goals for that time period as it's set. And so that's my long mini rant, or I guess not that one, my mini rant about like, I think we really need to focus down on what we mean by all of this and actually come up with the goals that we wanna achieve in specific timeframes too.
It almost feels like we also need a shared vocabulary of the hierarchy of this. Because we don't, it's that we don't have the words to communicate it to each other, which makes it really hard to communicate it.
Calvin, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I was sort of wanting to just echo a sentiment that Lou made about like, making this more accessible to community. Because I sort of found myself pretty lost in this conversation and because I don't really have so, so these things might be clear. And what I'm thinking is, at least to me, how I'm understanding.
Uh oh, I think we lost you, Calvin. While we're waiting for Calvin to see if he comes back, Shauna, did you wanna, oh, there, Calvin, are you with us again?
Yeah.
Okay.
What all did you, okay, what I was saying was basically, since I don't really have a background in strategic planning, I've been a bit lost in this conversation. And what it seemed like to me is that these are less of goals and more focuses, to use like an easily understandable word that makes sense in my head, based off what I've been hearing and seeing. But what I'm not understanding is, are we trying to turn these focuses into goals and set goals that can be tangibly completed? Or are we wanting to realize that these focuses and move forward with the fact that their focus is that can have little goals building up to and constantly having new goal.
Thank you. It's, it's good to get feedback on somebody who, from somebody who is not super familiar with this, because that's like community feedback, right? Like the language may need to be adjusted as far as what we're calling things. Shauna.
Thanks, Kristen. And Calvin, I think you did a great job in your questions of summarizing a lot of the things that are coming up for many of us on the call just around how we think about these in terms of strategic priority areas versus goals and what goes underneath versus what sits on top. And those are overarching, overarching categories too. And just to give, to get an example of where my mind has gone, I've really appreciated everyone's comments about this and, and share a lot of those same questions. To your original question, Kristen, around are these the priori, priority areas or goals? Or are there other things that need to be taken into account? I'd written down two things that I've seen as themes coming out this year that aren't in these overarching, whether we call them goals or strategic priorities. And it brings up the question of, is it worth adding them as strategic priorities versus are they goals that fit under these other pieces too? So it gets down to that semantics question of what, what are we calling these? How are we really operationalizing this as well? And those two things, just to put on our thinking around it are, one, what the whole conversation is about to say around community engagement. That the only mention of community engagement is specific to the bond program. And so thinking about, is that a specific priority of the board and, and of the district in terms of really co-partnering with families, with the community in these efforts? And if so, does that appear as a strategic area in itself versus something that is embedded in the specific goals under each of those areas? And then the other that comes up for me is staff. And I know staffer mentioned under the wellness goal, when you look at the specific words under there. But throughout the pandemic especially, worry about staff retention, staff professional development, staff support, the wellbeing of staff, you know, like I said, there is that one mention here. But is that a goal in and of itself? Is having well-supported teachers who, who are here long-term and that that is a goal in and of itself versus is that a goal that fits under each of these that for students to achieve academically, for them to have health and wellness? Is staff one piece of that along the way versus an overarching strategic area in and of itself? So those were a couple of things that came up for me. And then bring in that question of where do those pieces best fit? And how do we think about that altogether?
Vince?
So, you know, as a person who sat in this, this process at the beginning, I'm just really, really excited about this conversation. I remember when we were trying to approve this, I remember the superintendent coming to us as the board churned this document, trying to work on it, trying to perfect it, coming to saying, "Look, I need you guys to settle and give me some, you know, some agreement." And I remember us provisionally approving this document, just to give the superintendent something so he could start writing a strategic plan. And because the board was not satisfied with this document. And I, I don't think the board has ever been satisfied with it. And so I just, I want to invite the board to think boldly about restructuring this. Shauna, I really appreciated your, your idea of including concepts from a logic model in, under these, under these buckets, if you will, and under these focus areas. I just think, think that's a really good idea and it's a great way to, to, you know, articulate these ideas to the strategic plan, to connect them more, you know, better. I think that these, these, what we are calling goals now are really just a disaggregation of a vision statement. A vision statement that was never actually created. Because there was a, there was a capstone document that we, that we had the pre, the, the preceding board already had, and we didn't wanna recreate that. We were trying to move more quickly. And so I think we, the board doesn't use that document any longer. So we have these goals that have nothing sitting on top of it. It's why, kind of one of the reasons why this document doesn't make a lot of sense. Where does the board wanna go? Where is that destination that we wanna get to? It's not on this document. And that's a key deficiency here. And that's why, one of the reasons why it's so confusing. Shauna, you were listing things, themes that are missing and I, you know, communicated what was on my list. But another one that I'm not seeing is the board's shift towards really focusing on student experience. Is that back when we drafted this in 2018, our focus wasn't really deep on student experience and that has since emerged. So I think that really needs to get in there. But I'm just, thank you all for this conversation.
Tina?
Yeah, thank you, Shauna and Vince for, I won't reiterate, but Ryan mentioned that he looks at the goals as something he can work with, with his admin and staff, and then bring data to us and give us concrete information. And I, I like looking at, you know, like long-term focuses. Goals are great, you know, because we could say, yep, we met it. There's our, you know, yay. But the pandemic has really changed things for how we go about seeing how we educate, how we support our staff, teachers and admin. And I really like what Shauna said, we really, I think we need to have a focus along what Shauna said, we really, I think we need to have a focus, a long-term focus on staff care and understanding being overwhelmed and burnout and retention. And give Ryan a little direction. And I know staff even looks at our board goals and focuses and, and the way they teach and what they bring about in their community and their classrooms. So I would really like to see how we could either look at a long-term focus. I don't know if it should be a goal. I just think it should be a focus on our staff. Without our staff, we can't run our schools. And our teachers are really meaning just as much as our students at this point in pandemic. Some focus from, I think all of us and an acknowledgement from the board.
So I'm going to ask a question because this process is iterative and and I'm not going to force you into an activity that doesn't make any sense right now. So what I, what I'm hearing, and please tell me if I'm wrong, these are, these, this is my encapsulation of what I'm hearing is that while some of these may be the right areas, there's still some thinking to do about whether this is comprehensive, whether or not some of these things can be combined and how they are drawn out in, as Shauna put it, a logic model, what they look like in, you know, I mean, I would say y'all need a picture of what this might look like, right? Like, or at least those of us that are visual learners do, like I like to see boxes with bullet points underneath and I want to know how something is defined. And then I know where to stop if I'm a board member and where action steps come in. And that's where Ryan and his team come in. So I'm wondering, my, my question to you is, I mean, this, this could be a little bit chicken and egg. And Ryan, I want to invite you to, to obviously be part of this conversation too. When does community engagement come in? Does the board need to? And I've got a recommendation for this, but there's a board need to really clarify, here are the, and let's call them buckets or big broad areas. Let's, let's pretend that the strategies are not there right now. Does the board need to really determine here are our big buckets of work? And, and in a draft form, this is what we are looking at. Now we want some community input on that. And, and if so, then that work probably needs to happen before the community is asked because it's harder to put out a just like, what do you think? Right? I mean, because you're not going to, you want to, want to be targeted in specific and what folks are being asked to weigh in on, right? Calvin, you've got your hand up. Did you have a thought about that?
Um, I'm thinking like, you said, we need to target more what we're asking from the community. And so perhaps a way to go about that would be making like, I think meeting miss, I think not a lot of community members might have the time to sit down and watch these four meetings or have the time to go through all the documents and stuff. And so just like better meeting minutes, that way the community can quickly digest what goes on. Because then we're not having to spend the time filling them in and then asking them what to do rather we can spend more time involving them in action rather than catching them up on what has happened.
Tina, you got your hand up. Did you want to weigh in again? Oh, you took it down. Sarah?
Yeah, I think I'm thinking back to when we looked at these. I don't remember all the details, but when we looked at these goals in the fall, we were not totally comfortable with where we were with them. Whether we call them goals or overarching themes or whatever. And we talked about revising them. And at that point, I believe, community engagement in that process was brought up, but and I, I don't remember where we landed on that. So this is, we're sort of having a discussion that we had once before.
Well, this is what I think, I'm sorry, I turned around, but I think this is where we are right now. This is like the follow-up on that. That prompt, is that right?
Yeah, recognizing that we still wanted to have an emphasis on community engagement and have the work to do around these goals or priorities at the same time.
Yeah.
And so to gain additional understanding as we wrestle with this from, in terms of perspective of community was important. And so this would allow us to either, as Kristen proposed, get a little clearer on those and then go out to the community for feedback or to go to the community for feedback with things a little looser, which then we would have to combine all that information together to firm these up. You know, when these were when these were first provisionally adopted, the reason that they were provisionally adopted was because there was a desire for greater community engagement in approving these goals. And one of the things that I did was I took that Cravallis 2020 vision and looked at our 2030 vision and looked at the alignment between what, you know, the members of our community had said around what, where they want to see Cravallis go as well as our goals and to say, not only do we have alignment, but there's a lot of community engagement that's happening with this other process that betrays what we're trying to accomplish here. So that's what got us to move from provisional to adopted goals. But I would say that that's has always been an area of tension with this is that we want more community engagement and involvement in it. But how do we do that? At the same time, recognizing that we're grappling with these concepts.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, you know, and also, you know, I think, I often want to hold, hold on to the impact that these goals have had. I mean, I don't think that means, like, I think there, we need to work on that. We need to decide if these are, these are our priorities still. I think, you know, this is great. And it's really important, especially because when we adopted these, the alignment we started seeing between the different sort of parts of the district work was really striking. And it felt like we went from you kind of, we're all kind of working together, but we're, the direction's not totally clear to this is what we're working on. And this is, this is, you know, this is the work we're doing to, to get to this to address this goal. And so I think that this is an important enough document for how the school district runs. And, and that even work to revise it and to strengthen it really needs to be done very mindfully. I don't think it's at a point right now where we can take it to the community because we can't even talk about it together. Um, so I think it needs, we need to have some kind of focus, some kind of you know, agreed upon way that each of these categories is talked about before we can even have the community about it. Right now it just feels like we're kind of all over the place.
Can I propose a framework of action or the next actions? I'll preface, if we had all the resources at the time, I think we can merge two ways to where I think we want to head with this discussion. One is understand what's going well with this document, how we're using it. The second pathway is what does the community want us to do to do this work better, strategic planning and strategic goals better? And let me start with the first path. First path, I would say, I would, I would draw what we call in here a concept map. Maybe it's a similar to Shauna's logic map, which is basically put the student achievement goal as a box and then strategies as another box and link them with what each does to what. And then we would have super tentative evaluation, budgeting priorities, levy decisions, what else? School improvement plan, all of these are entities, are boxes. And as it stands right now, let's just understand what are the relationships, what informs what and how it's informed it. I think that would be one product is looking at how these things interact with each other. And I'm, I'm confident we will see some missing parts and say, oh, we have completely implicit, some relationships implicit. Implicitly somewhere and we need to elaborate on it or call it some, as an example, a vision of our why. So that's the first path. I, I would say it's assessing where we are and how we do it. And what, what are we calling it? That the relationship between them? I'm going to call it concept map or logic. The other pathway I'm thinking of, if we would go to the community within the next year, I would say, if there will be a value of asking, what is your why? And what is our what's? And maybe what's the how that you're really interested in? So the why is the, why schools are there, really the vision, the philosophical purpose of public school. And then the what's somewhere between the goals that we see them here and somewhere where we have attainable goals. And then the how is how we achieve those. And maybe some inputs from the community will give us a better clarity of missing parts. And also maybe about framing is student involvement, a student voice, a how to achieve all of these things? Or actually a why and, and an objective by itself. Shared governance, using student voices to help them go by itself. And it should be there up there with the why. So that could be something we, one example, we could learn with community engagement. So mapping the pieces that we have and maybe seeing some missing pieces as it stands now. The other pathway is having this framework of asking those three questions or maybe more to the community. And we could start from a blank slate without really priming them with these goals. And hear from the community, what do they expect from the school? Or from their public schools? And we might learn more than what we have on this document for sure. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. How am I calling our, the, we have Vince and Shauna. And Calvin?
I think, I think they go and they're stacked in order of when they were raised.
They are. You go first, Lou.
Mine was actually a question for Vince and you. So if you want to stay unmuted and then I'll say the other part. So you had mentioned like the, when this got formulated, it wasn't, it wasn't intended to be the goals. It was like the tentative goals. And I think Ryan talked about that too. Was there at that time period? Was there? Did you all have somewhat in mind a timeline to have it revised by? And, or was it kind of just like, we'll get to it when we can. And then stuff started happening?
I mean, we eventually, you know, did a final approval of these goals and, and it it was a compromise decision. It was good enough and we were moving on. And we knew that we had goals for the next five years. Superintendent was able to get on with work. We were able to get a strategic plan out of it. And it was good enough for the first iteration. You know, for the board at the time. And so we moved on, we were able to function with this document. And so we moved on. And we knew that we would get to this point again. And the board would say, this isn't good enough. And we would, we would start a process of revising these and refining it. And so yeah, that's how it went down. It wasn't perfect, but it was good enough.
Okay, that makes sense. And I mean, we don't have that much longer on these goals, right? Like
No.
Yeah. And so it's like, I always forget, like, I feel like we're in sci-fi land. When I say, see 2023, I was like, that's so far away, but it's not. So and so we don't have very much longer on these. So I think like our conversation, like it could focus on like, this is what we have, like you said, does that piece that the previous board worked really hard to come on agreement with and how do we transform them moving forward? And what I have, what I'm thinking is like, okay, so if we have all these goals, which we wouldn't have met all of these by 2023, obviously. How do we prepare that document ahead of time? I think Calvin brought that up earlier too, about making sure we have something that is legible to for the community. But I think when we engage with the community and we get to that point, I know this is a little bit ahead of the game, but I want to make sure it said is that we're clear with what we're going to do with their feedback. Otherwise, some folk may feel very disappointed if their feedback doesn't show up in ways they hoped it would. And so I think like, that's going to be really important to talk about like what the purpose of the feedback is and is it because we want to consider new ideas? Is it because we want perspective? Is it going to make an impact on our decision? And so I think like, all of those things we need to be very, very clear about upfront. Or else it causes, like I said, disappointment. And I think that's pretty much all I was going to say and wanted to make that clarifying, like, was it the timeline was the goals, which were the five years? And so got it. Thanks, Vince.
And just before, before Vince goes, one of the reasons that, and I one of the reasons that we talked about what's the, what are the intended outcomes for community engagement is to hopefully be that guide for, for expressing to the community, here's, here's why we want this so that we can be held accountable, gather multiple perspectives, earn your trust, you know, offer transparency, empowerment of the community and shared, shared governance and responsiveness. So I think that like having that conversation hopefully, well then, you know, I think, I think Sammy put it really well, like there's a couple of ways you can go. And regardless of which way that that rationale that you came up with tonight for why you would want to engage the community can guide whatever process you end up taking and you can communicate that out so that, you know, I mean, along with here's, here's our process, here's what we're going to do with this, but here's, here's why we want to hear from you too. Vince, I think you were next.
Yeah, I, I want to go back to Sammy's comments and I really appreciated, you know, the idea of, of a parallel processes. One of the things I really appreciated about what you, what you said is, you know, going back and, and looking at this document and saying what works and what doesn't. And, and getting very, very clear on how we want to structure this document. That, that diagram that Kristen was talking about. And I think that's work that, that the board can do. You know, on its own, figure out, or the board in district, we can sit down and figure out what the document needs to look like. We're talking about the structure, not the guts inside. And in parallel, this is the community engagement piece. Sammy, you, I think you hit nail on the head. You know, going out to the community and asking just a few questions. And I'm reminded of a process that the county did some years ago where they went out to the community and asked three questions. And these were the questions. Why do you value living in, it was Benton County, but we could re-fame that is what do you value about Corvallis schools? What's important to you? And that tells us what we need to preserve. The other question is, where do we need to be in the next 20, 30, 50 years? What does education look like in Corvallis in 50 years from now? And get that vision from each, from anybody that we interview and then ask them, how do we get there? What are the methods that we use? And from that, you're going to get a bunch of qualitative information, lots and lots of ideas. But you can code that aggregated together and themes will emerge. I'm betting that they would fit in, into many, or if not all of these buckets. But it would give a lot of ideas about what's important and where this community wants to go and ideas conception of, of how to get there. I would definitely support something like that. And that would be the grist for the mill that would create the guts of our strategic plan, what would go in it. And so the board would need to figure out what that framework, what the document should look like or the documents, because we're talking about multiple strategic documents.
So I actually also had a question for Vince. And then I have a question for Sammy. And then I have a question for Lou. And I want to touch back on what Vince just said. So my first question for you, Vince, was actually sort of touching back on what Lou said. When we were creating these goals, were they meant to sort of like define student success or find how we achieve student success?
Oh, God. Oh gosh, it's, it was more trying to figure out what does student success look like? We had a conception of what student success looked like. And then what do we need to do to get there? So it's really about what were the interventions, what did the organization need to do? And you can see that in these, in these, in these goal areas as, as you read through them, they're action-based.
Yeah. And so then that moves into my question for Sammy, which is like, action-based, how and why? And I want to like say, I, I support Vince's idea to put out something to the community. And I think maybe also putting out something to the students. Like what do they want to see from this district? Where do they want the schools to go? And maybe like, allowing students to have a vote or to have more of a say in how the school district wants to move forward with our plans, because we're saying new goals in 2023, right? So maybe like allowing community, like saying something out to the community, like what do they value? And then saying something else to the students, like what do they want to see from us? And maybe even send, actually not maybe, send something out to the teachers as well. Like what do they, why do they like work? Why do they choose to work for the Corvallis schools instead of other schools? And where do they want us to move? And then, um, for the goals, I was wondering and touching back on what Lou said about like, starting to maybe plan for like 2023, when we're having to create these new goals. Like we have a year left of five years and we set these goals for five years. And so while we want to certainly look, are these goals doing enough now? We also should start looking to the future of like, what goals might we want to set for the 2023 to 2028 time period?
Yeah. I, Calvin, I just, just to clarify, I think it's like a request or an idea that we kind of accomplish it rather than a question, right?
Um, which part of what?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure. I, I hear you about, I thought I heard that, that you said you might have a question for me.
Oh, oh, oh. I guess my question was sort of like, what is your, is the board going, going to take these actions? And you touched on how and why we should increase student involvement. And so I was wondering maybe what the reasoning is that students or the student representatives don't get to vote? And why the students don't get as much representation like we have the representatives from each school? There's not really much student voice outside of that.
Yes, I can answer that. And first of all, I want to say, oh, it's kind of weird because I'm here participating, just like everybody with the board. All of us are going to decide where we're headed. But I, I can answer about the why students representative cannot vote. Unfortunately, it's by law, only elected board members in Oregon can vote in their local school boards. And it really makes me sad because I know a friend of mine knew way back then in Alaska, the student representative actually was a voting member. I'm not sure what's the law there. So that's a legal impediment. However, I would say, my experience and a couple of, several of my colleagues, now all of them are aware of other school boards where the students are allowed in their voice and the student representatives say, you should not go that direction. And if the board goes completely the other direction, it just shows to the community that the board is not answering to the students. So as we are publicly facing, I think we're, we're held accountable and we should elevate student voice. And I think it's a good idea that we embrace it if the students during the deliberation process, they say, we think you should vote in a way that matters to a decent goal or even have an opinion about it. We should elevate that student voice really matter all the way to the boardroom. And that gets me to the third point and I want to invite anyone else who want to contribute to that answer. We have done okay work in having a tradition of student representatives up to six or two per school and program. Some school districts have one, some school districts have none. But we don't have a policy, which means this is a tradition rather than, or practice rather than a policy that we can commit to. So I think as we are hoping that within this year and the coming period, we want to make sure student voice in the boardroom have a systemic way that's describing policy. So I'm not sure if I'm answering the question, but maybe that's what we were thinking on at the board is elevating student voice, making sure that you have the ability to deliberate with the board as you represent. And but also we're working on developing a policy that clarifies what's your role and how you contribute during the board and also run selection, et cetera. And I'm aware of several students leaders across Oregon who want to actually pass a law that requires something like that in every school board.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's answered the question.
That was sort of answered my question. I guess I kind of am curious now what law prohibits voting? Cause last year, Kate and I worked with some other student representatives from across Oregon to push for this law to require policy, as you were mentioning. We worked with some of these other student representatives to try and get some traction for this law to get passed. And some of these other representatives in areas such as Beaverton. And I think there was someone from Eastern Oregon. They were allowed to vote on their school board and attend those business meetings. So I was just sort of curious what law prohibits that?
The votes are not, I know some of these districts and like when I worked at PPS, we had student reps who voted, but just in advisory manner. Right? Like it didn't count toward, toward, I, I can't say what the statute is, but only publicly like of voting age and, and, and registered voters in the district can be board members and they're the only ones that can vote. But there are districts that just have sort of an advisory or pro forma, like, you know, vote by the, by the student reps and they take that into consideration. It's noted in the minutes, but it's not counted toward the total, because it can't be board vote. So that, that may be, I know Lake Oswego has a couple, Portland Public Schools has a couple.
Yeah, that might be, that might be what it is.
They're using a vote of confidence system where they, they agree not to move forward unless there's a consensus that even the non-voting members are, have had an opportunity to voice and have an opportunity to express their perspective on the final outcome. And that is different than recording a legal vote. And I would say that that's something we should consider in the language of whatever policy we do go forward with. And I think Beaverton actually has a really good policy that we, maybe it would be good for us to look at and consider as a model.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. That explained it. So thank you. And I was wondering then maybe could we, which you touched on, maybe working towards that, but like, could we then, in that, all the same was saying outlining, maybe working towards allowing student representatives that advisory vote? That's not, but it's still like showing, does the student body approve of this?
So I want to make sure that we get this conversation wrapped up for, we're running out of time tonight. Obviously this will be part of your conversation going forward. I think that's great. We've got Shawna and then Tina and then, then I want to make sure that we come to some decision about how we're going to move forward before we wrap up. Shawna?
Thanks, Kristin. And I've, I've heard this idea now since, since I raised my hand voiced by several different board members, including Calvin too. Just around considering and pushing ourselves and pushing the board in district in terms of how we think about that community engagement piece when we come to a decision about how that's going to go forward. I know on the agenda for tonight, there was a, a bullet around timeline for a community survey and pushing us to make sure that we are thinking beyond a survey that might make assumptions about literacy, language, technology, and thinking really creatively about how we make sure we're engaging all community as well as possible, from families to staff to students and other community members in our process, in whatever way it moves forward. So just, I know it's, it's challenging with the pandemic and harder to bring people together or harder to engage folks informally in lots of different ways. But just putting that on the table too, in terms of just wanting to make sure that we're also talking about that actual process and how we do it creatively to engage as many voices as possible.
Tina?
Try my best to keep this short. I just wanted to say that I just wanted to put this out there for people to ponder and to think about as we gather this information from community and, and, and really listen to the voices of our community and our families. And, and uplift the voices that are normally not heard. And I want to say that the pandemic has wreaked havoc across the nation. But it also has given us a pause to look at, what do we want to vision for our district? What's working, what isn't working? And it has opened so many eyes and possibilities of how we can imagine what education will look like. Education isn't conveyor belt education anymore. We know there's a whole child. We know that we have to look at our teachers and the relationships that are built, they are building with our, with our, with our families and students. And how imperative that we incorporate that into our, whatever, how we decided to go about making up these policies or forms or goals or focuses. In the end, what do we really vision for our district? And I just wanted to make sure that that's in our, in our forefront of our thinking when we finally come together and we gather all this information. We have a chance to really, we've already been doing it. We've been doing the anti-racism work. We've been elevating voices that, and giving voice, you know, to listen to folks that usually don't have, you know, an ability to, to, to give feedback. And I think this is just a pivotal moment that we could take in, in this endeavor that we're taking with these goals and visions and focuses.
Thank you. All right, Lou, and then I'm going to ask you a question. Not you, Lou, specifically, everybody. It sounded like I was about to put you on the spot.
It's like, oh, okay. Um, I just wanted to go back to Calvin because he said he had a question for me too. And I wanted to make sure if he still had that question. If not, it's okay. But I just wanted to make that spacer as always, if he needed to email later, that works too.
I think through the conversation, my question for you was answered.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure, just want to make sure it got addressed. That was all.
Okay, so, so how do you want to proceed? So there have been some ideas thrown out about, you know, how like Vince had an idea about like just putting something big and broad out to the community. That, that, you know, with some focused questions, not too focused, but that might generate a lot of responses. That has been said, could be coded, could be, you know, themed, whatever. I'm happy to help with that if you want. There then is the idea of, do you as a board do some work around? Because as, as some of you pointed out, there, it's hard to have a coherent conversation without a common language yet. And do you as a board want to do some work on, on refinement? On, you know, putting together something that the community could respond to specifically? Or, you know, what's the, because one of the things that we were going to do tonight, that I don't think we're going to do right now, because we're sort of at this fork in the road, is what questions do you want to ask the community? Now, we, we could do that. I don't think it's going to be as big and broad as the, as the, the activity I had planned. But, you know, if there's a decision that, you know, let's, let's go out, ask up questions. Certainly those could, you know, if there's already a suggestion, those could be discussed tonight. Or if it's that the board decides it needs to do a little more work on its own first and sort of get a firm footing before going out to the community. That might be a plan for next time or, you know, or work that you would do between times that we see each other. So I'm just kind of like putting on the table what I have heard from you as possibilities tonight. And to see what the, what the group thought is around what the best way to proceed is for, for everybody involved, especially if you want to meet those objectives of getting the community participation. Tina, you got your hand up?
No, sorry.
Oh, no problem. Lou?
I kind of liked what, it was a combo of something Sammy and Vince both kind of brought up about like the different approaches and stuff like that. And Vince had brought forward some questions that I think are really helpful for us to like do some framework thinking about for the goals. And I can't remember what they were, Vince, off the top of my head. You have them written down. I know.
Yeah, I wrote them down right here.
Yeah. And so I think like, if we maybe come back to the, the start of those questions and see if that'll get us exactly as like, if we all like the questions and that could be a good starting point. But I think like, they're also developed in a way that is strategic thinking with community input already embedded in them. And I think that it'll help us formulate the things that we want to bring back for more input as far as goals. But it'll help us give that baseline pulse of the community.
Vince?
So I'm happy to support with that. I have a, I have a good idea of how to structure this. So I'm happy to bring a proposal. Kristin, you and I could probably work together on blocking out something based on the input that we've heard tonight. But the reason I put my hand up is because I want to be very cognizant of, of staff effort. We are on the leading edge of the Omicron wave. And so I just want to, whatever we choose, I think we just need to be really mindful of staff time and the needs of our kiddos. And just have very realistic expectations about what we can get accomplished. So that was really, so why we can have these really lofty ideas of, of where we want to go. We may be limited in how much we can get done.
Calvin?
Yeah, I'm kind of just going off of what Vince said. I think we also just really need to make sure that we consider things from a staff perspective. Because well, the community has the public comment and the student body has the student representatives. There's not really a staff representative or someone to represent the staff. And a lot of times I might not be able to come to these public comments or tune in at the point in me because I'll be preparing for whatever they have to teach tomorrow or something. So just, we should be really cognizant about the staff perspective and not leaving the staff out and behind because there's not a director then to do it for them.
Ryan, I was just going to ask you if you wanted to weigh in.
Thanks. So I, I, as I've been listening tonight, one of the things that stands out to me is sort of a little bit of what everybody shared. In terms of thinking about this as we do some positioning for the next round of prior, priorities or goals or logic model that helps us to, to better communicate out to the community what we're, what we're working on and what we're about. So I think, so I'm thinking about it in terms of the next 18 months rather than the next two months. We just sent out a survey to parents around local option. Let me, we have, you know, those surveys are available at our schools. They're, they, they spend it out through PR. So there's, there's, at some point, there's opportunities for people to provide us input around that. And I don't want those two things to get confused right now. So I, I like that idea of we're basically on ramping. What I also like is the questions that Vince proposed. Because I think that that sort of information, if it was themed, would help us to be able to enhance what we're able to develop as a team. What we're able to develop as a team, because we have some innovative thinkers in our group. And I think we could as a group with that sort of information in in retreat, we could really do some really tremendous work. So what so I like I'm taking snippets from each one of you because I think each one of you have had some really good perspectives to share around it. So what I'm wondering is if it's not, if I guess I'm agreeing that that's really where I think we should head as well. Also recognizing the capacity of staff, but wondering if there's ways that we can do some partnering. With OSBA or with OSU or other areas that do research. And also community engagement. So it doesn't necessarily have to rely on a few staff members to pull this off. So those are the sorts of things that I've been thinking about as I've been listening tonight about how. How where we're at, we're really positioned well. You know, Tina said said it when she said, you know, we are coming out of the pandemic. What we've learned over the last two years shouldn't be forgotten. When I look at these goals, I think, wow, we have come a long ways just thinking about being in that room and having the conversation that got us to the point. That this document was created. So I feel really good about that and optimistic about that. And also know we're now living in a new, a new situation, a new reality. And we have to think about education a little bit differently.
So I wonder then, is there, like, when you think about next time we get together? First of all, is there stuff that you want to do or have the capacity to do in between now and then? Because one of the things that Vince said was, you know, the board could probably do this. There was there was some element of this. I think it was just sort of going through this this document. I don't know what your agendas look like between now and then, but I, you know, I am I'm. The the sort of, you know, cloud in front of me is, okay, so you've got you've got staff capacity. That's that's an issue. I'm sure there's a board capacity issue. I know that that you're on a longer trajectory. This is not a two month thing. This is an eighteen month thing or or whatever. You've also got other initiatives going on that you need community feedback for. So what is it? Which which is good information because I think it's it's both urgent, but a little slower. It's not like you don't have anything that you're working on for sure. But I wonder what your thoughts are then about, you know, is this something that you that you want to take and and get those big questions and put it out to the community? Or do you want to spend some time in development? Again, sort of taking pieces from everything everybody has said, Lou?
I think Ryan said, and of course, because like I'm always thinking about like student development too at the collegiate level. But is this a would this be an opportunity to work with a student for internship credits or something like that? Because from campus, I don't know what the what's going on with like the ed program because I'm not in that program. Or even like the public policy program, like something around those areas that could perhaps like be an opportunity for a college student. To gain experience through internship credits, just throwing that out there as an idea because I'm always about like, how do we support students at multiple levels? But also thinking about board members doing work. Is it something that a couple of board members that's within the realm of we can work on things together without being in an official meeting? Kind of draft some of this stuff together to bring to the meeting. That way it's like saving time in the meeting like we've done on other projects. Is that something that we can do? Or is that not allowed? I'm not a hundred percent sure sometimes with which projects we work on and fully out here and which ones we work on sometimes. Yeah.
I think just in partial answer to that that question. You can, you know, you can certainly talk with another board member without violating public meeting law, particularly when you're creating something that you're going to bring to the full board. And that's going to be a public document anyway. And that's the intent, right? Is to is to draft something that would be brought to the full board. So I think that that's. That's probably a good use of of time if anybody's got that kind of time. It sounds so luxurious to say. Time. Ryan?
I think we should. Finish what sort of where we're at, not not tonight, but like in this in this agenda. I think if we came back to what question should we ask our community? And how we're going to go about that. And we left the next meeting having a plan for that, I would feel super solid about what what's what's needed. What my team's going to be up to, what our board members are going to be up to and when we're going to come back together and. Take that information and enhance this document. To me, that would be pretty pretty grounding and it would be and I think it would get us further down this path.
Just to clarify, are you saying that tonight or the next time? Are you saying like pick that up next time with the what questions are we going to ask them in our timeline? Or you said you want to do that tonight?
We'd be here till midnight. And so I think we do this next time.
I'm ahead of time with thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, we can actually probably the packet of put some priming questions or fill in the blank kind of tool for us to.
Or even. You come up with some questions ahead of time that then get. Combined so that it's their themes that are obvious and what we're thinking about. We come to the meeting already knowing those things rather than sort of starting.
Well, and you all still have access to this mural, right? I mean, you could go in here under your name and put some ideas down. I would say don't do it in a collaborative fashion with others. But if you wanted to prep for the meeting by, you know, putting some ideas down, I can always go in and, you know, if there are. Clear clumps of things that are either do like the exact same or have clear, I mean, I can, we can start from a place of not just a blank slate. Next time. So if you wanted to do that or you wanted to send me things, if you didn't want to access the mural, I can put them in there. So there's definitely some pre-work that we can do to start with a a foundation. Which I think is a great idea. So thank you, Sarah.
When would you want those done by in preparation for the next meeting? Are you going to like send us a reminder? Or do you have some like a how many weeks in advance or kind of thing?
Let's see. Well, let's look at when our next meeting is.
I think the first week of March if I'm not mistaken is March March 3rd.
March 3rd. Let me just make sure. I'm sure I have it. I do have it. Okay, March 3rd. So, you know, I think what I'll do, you can start putting things anytime, but that's that's a long time from now. So I think what I would do, well, it looks like a long time from now. I think what I would do is probably by like the seventeenth, just if nobody's put anything in there, just send you a reminder. If you don't get everything put in, that's okay. We can do that at the meeting too. But any pre-work that we want to do will just be helpful. So I'll just put it in my calendar to send a reminder on February seventeenth.
Are we not meeting on February 3rd?
We are, though we are going to have a business meeting or some actions that we will do about our session with Kristen for the scholarship program. The next session for this professional development that this series is going to be on March 3rd.
Okay, I was just unclear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And I just wanted to highlight something. This is very valuable. And I see this as we're taking our time and we are, we are ahead of the goal, which is by twenty twenty three or by maybe the end of twenty twenty two. We have really good community engagement plan and we can implement it. But to to highlight something regarding capacity, I would encourage myself and my colleagues to reflect on that. As we learn more from the survey regarding the levy renewal. And tendently, we are expecting to ask for the voters with a renewal of the levy. That's a survival of our mission, the equivalent of sixty plus FTE and core programs and keeping the class size where it is. That's community engagements we need to celebrate and successfully to celebrate and remind the community that we need to continue with. Otherwise, we will be thinking about which sixty FD. So we will need to cut up for visa. We don't ask for a renewal or the renewal doesn't pass. So I feel we need to really think in this parallel, a long term vision in terms of community engagement and as board members individually and collectively in our elected capacity and individual capacity. That we ask people to renew this levy so we can keep the successes of the district. We just want to highlight that that we've got to make sure we we focus on that as well.
Yeah, I just, I want to say that as as somebody who is the first round of this goal setting had not done a lot of organizational work. Before, I found that process at a lot of points really frustrating because I felt like we're not getting any work done. We just keep talking about these goals and we keep rehashing these goals and then we take three steps forward and two steps back. And it was, you know, just this long arduous process. And it got really frustrating sometimes. But when we finally got, what was at that point? A list of goals we were happy with. The impact that we saw of that work was really rewarding to see. And it felt like, oh, that's why we do all that work. So I think, you know, I'm sitting here trying to remind myself of that experience of that sort of three step forward, two step back every time we go through this. Because it took that work to get to something that made a big impact. And we're now we're taking that as a base and improving on it and strengthening it. And so what I expect to see is that by going through this frustrating, arduous work again. We make an even bigger impact the next time. So that's what I'm sitting here thinking.
Of that perspective, Sarah. Anybody have any questions for me or need anything from me? I like Vince's answer. Vince is my colleague now, so I get to give him a bad time. Tina?
Kristin, I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. I was feeling really crummy and I'm just like, woo.
Thank you. I love I love talking to all of you. You all you all do all the work. Okay, I don't know. Have you got other things on the agenda after me? I thought I saw something.
Yeah, just board member comments.
Okay, okay. If you need anything from me, you know where to find me. We've got a plan for next time and I'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
All right, board member comments. Any board member wish to make a comment or have a future item that they wish to see in the future?
Sammy, when when are we? Sorry, I'm totally blanking. When are we hearing from the folks from the McKinney Vento program?
I believe May, October.
Okay, great. I knew it was coming soon, but I couldn't really remember exactly. So thanks. I I don't have any other thing. I just wanted to make sure that that was coming soon.
So that's a great question, Trace. So Sarah will be coming next week. And then also later in this year, she is going to partner with our with Joe and Sabrina and some other members of our. So students support team to come and do a more comprehensive view beyond just our students that are navigating publics. And so I think it's like one component. And over time, what we've recognized is there's a need to include additional information and perspectives when we talk about that we pursued it. So that's one of the things that we're going to be providing some enhancements to this year.
Great. I look forward to that. Thanks.
The other comments are featured in that. All right, see none of this number that's affected the board, the school board meeting for tonight is adjourned.